Okay, thank you everybody for being here. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Trustees to order 7:37 PM, March 9th. Can I please have the roll?
Village President Torpey.
Here.
Trustee Clark.
Here.
Trustee Cullum.
Here.
Trustee Davis-Ford is absent. Trustee Levinson.
Present.
Trustee Rosner.
Here.
Trustee Schnall.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Lerner.
Here.
Mr. Rother.
Here.
Susan Caljean, present. Out of the notice of this meeting has been provided to the press in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-6. In addition, notice of this meeting was posted in Village Hall and on the Village website and has been filed in the office of the Village Clerk. Official action may be taken. Susan Caljean, Village Clerk.
Thank you. We have one resolution to go into executive session. The items to be discussed are fire department staffing, which is a personnel matter; police department, which is a personnel and contract negotiation; and Village Hall renovation and adaptive reuse, which is contract negotiations and attorney-client privilege.
I move.
Moved by Trustee Cullum, seconded by Trustee Levinson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed abstentions? We're back at eight.
...
Okay, thank you everybody for being here and for your patience. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Trustees back to order. Could we please have the roll?
Village President Torpe.
Here.
Trustee Clark.
Here.
Trustee Cullen.
Here.
Trustee Davis Ford.
Here.
Trustee Levinson.
Present.
Trustee Rosner.
Yeah.
Trustee Schnall.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Lerner.
Here.
Mr. Rother.
Here.
Susan Caljean, present.
Thank you. Before we get started, could everybody please rise for the I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please stay standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. Hey, just a couple of quick announcements before we really get started here. The first is perfectly appropriate for tonight. Coffee with a Cop. South Orange's Community Policing Unit is encouraging groups of residents to meet informally with local officers to discuss any law enforcement issues they face every day, such as neighbors with unsightly properties, suspicious neighborhood activity, or misunderstood ordinances. If you're concerned about airing your issues in front of others, you can also ask for a one-on-one. Coffee with a Cop is going to be launched later this month and will be held quarterly throughout the year. The meetings will be held at local coffee houses around town. The dates and times and locations will be announced by the Public Safety Committee later this month. Another great initiative out of our police department, this is a reward for your child's good behavior. When the weather warms up and kids are moving around town, South Orange police officers will be watching for kids' good behavior. Practices such as wearing a helmet while bicycling or skateboarding, crossing with the light and not jaywalking, things of that nature. Kids who display good behavior will be issued a positive behavior citation from South Orange police officers. This is a program that's sponsored by the village and the police department and the South Orange Village Center Alliance. Cold Stone Creamery and Pirate's Pizza are also donating rewards for kids who do get those citations, the good behavior citations. Another is just a reminder about some services that our police department does offer for protection for your home and property. So you can call the police department at nine seven three seven six three three thousand, extension seven eight zero two, to arrange for one of these free services. One is a home security survey. So you can let a police officer come take stock of your home to identify ways to improve its safety. The officer will look at things like lighting, high hedges that burglars could use for hiding, storage measures for valuable items, accessible wireless networks, alarm systems, and much more. Police may also recommend tracking systems for your electronic devices in the event that they are lost or stolen. And another is bicycle registration. So this is where you can get for free your bike engraved with a unique serial number. The police keep that number on file, and so in case your bike is lost or stolen, they can use that serial number to track it back to you. March Village Madness. Seton Hall's very own is headed to the Women's NCAA Final Four Championship. To honor them, that's right, to honor them, the Village Center Alliance is presenting March Village Madness, a promotion with a game card featuring brackets for sixty-four village businesses. From March nineteenth through April sixth, spend money in as many of the businesses as you can and save your receipts. Whoever collects receipts from the greatest number of businesses by April fifth will win five hundred dollars in gift cards from our very own South Orange merchants. You can visit sovillagecenter.org for complete details on the program. And the first annual South Orange Seniors Prom will be Sunday, April twelfth, from two to five P M. in the Chancellor's Suite at Seton Hall University, dressed formally or casually, as you choose. There'll be finger foods provided. This is a free event co-sponsored by South Orange Seniors and the Seton Hall University Division of Volunteer Efforts. Seton Hall is donating the venue, audio equipment, and catering, and in return, food donations, one nonperishable item per person, are requested as part of Dove's ongoing mission for community service. Free transportation to and from the prom will be provided by the Parking Authority. To sign up for the event, you can RSVP with nan sammons at nine seven three two seven five three eight five five, or email N A N S A M six at gmail dot com. And a reminder that this Wednesday at seven thirty P M. at Temple Beth El, there will be a community forum on proposed development on Irvington Avenue. So if anybody's interested in learning more about that, has any questions about it, please go out seven thirty on Wednesday to Temple Beth El. So now getting to the part of the meeting that I think a few of you might be here for. We have one resolution for separate action. Can we have that resolution read by title, please?
Resolution appointing Michael Corrigan.
Sorry?
Resolution forty-four, is that?
Yep.
Resolution two thousand and fifteen dash forty-four, resolution appointing Michael Corrigan as lieutenant in the South Orange Department of Public Safety and Police Force.
Thank you. At this time, do I have a motion from the board?
May I move?
Moved by trustee Levinson.
Oh, seconded.
Seconded by trustee Rosner. Do we have a roll call, please?
Village President Torpe.
I wish I could vote.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Cullen.
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford.
Yes.
Trustee Levinson.
Yes.
Trustee Rosner.
Yes.
Trustee Schnall.
Yes.
Thank you.
Could have done a symbolic vote.
That's true. Well, at this time, before we do the swearing, I'd like to invite Chief Shalala to say a few words.
Mayor Torpe opened up by saying some of the good things that the police department is doing. And one thing I want to say right now, one of the good One of the good things that we're doing tonight, and probably the best thing we're doing tonight, is promoting Mike Corrigan. A little background on Mike Corrigan, he's been with the police department for nineteen and a half years. He grew up in South Orange. His brother Tom is here. Should be noted that his sister-in-law Dawn is a member of the police department. She's an outstanding member of the police department as well. I think it speaks volumes to the fact that if you look into the crowd, there's many of retired officers that are here and present members that are here, and it speaks volumes to the fact that he has the respect of many of his peers here. Mike, last year, did the pedestrian decoy details, and we got statewide recognition, and most of that credit goes to Mike. It's always nice to see when a local guy does well. That's why I'd like to call up Mike right now.
Thank you very much. It's my wife, Elizabeth.
How's it going? We can sort of come out here, go to the corner if you'd like.
Take the mic.
Raise your right hand.
Did you need the mic for television?
Aye.
Grab the mic.
You need the mic for the
Very rarely do people say I'm too quiet. Aye, Michael Corrigan.
Aye, Michael Corrigan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of New Jersey.
And the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance
And allegiance.
To the same
To the same.
And to the governments established
And to the governments established.
In the United States
In the United States.
And in this state
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully
And that I will faithfully
Impartially
Impartially.
And justly perform
And justly perform.
All of the duties
All the duties.
Of the office of lieutenant
Of the office of lieutenant.
In the South Orange Police Department
In the South Orange Police Department.
According to the best of my ability
According to the best of my ability.
And that I will not use my office
And that I will not use my office
To grant preferential treatment
To grant preferential treatment.
Nor seek personal gain
Nor seek personal gain.
Favor or advantage
Favor or advantage.
Not available to the general public.
Not available to the general public.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Lieutenant.
Sheen, you're losing your crowd.
I was not planning on speaking. I had nothing prepared, I'm sorry. But thank you guys, have a good night. You're all welcome to come back to Georgia, just have a cocktail.
If you're there in three more hours.
Exactly, we'd love to.
Yeah, Chief?
Yeah. I just, just on a side note, I'm sorry, I just wanted to, I want to thank the trustees
Corrigan on this police force, the commitment not to just the enforcement, to the education, to the community as a whole. And I can't congratulate you enough, and I know that you have the full faith of the Board of Trustees moving forward, doing the job that you have been doing.
Thank you. What Trustee Colum left out was that dealing with that group of three-to-five-year-olds is actually the easiest group in town to deal with.
Even easier than you.
Yeah, I know. I've got them beat by a couple of years, too. So next, I would like to ask Mark Packer, the Executive Director from SOPAC, up to talk to us a little bit about the building that we are in right now.
Boy, do I know how to clear a room. Good evening, President Torpe, distinguished trustees. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight and update you on SOPAC's ninth season, and exciting strategic planning work we've been engaged in to chart a course for the next three years. First, I would like to just briefly recap SOPAC's accomplishments of the last season and share some impressive data about the growth of the center. SOPAC finished FY14 with its first organizational surplus in its eight-year history. Although modest, that $40,700 surplus marked an important turning point for us on the road to fiscal stability and sustainability. In comparing FY14 to the previous year, SOPAC revenues grew by a staggering $652,000, or 30% in one year. Total revenues for FY14 were over $2.8 million. As has been previously described, this growth in income was largely realized as a result of two factors. The marked expansion and diversification of SOPAC's presenting series, generating an additional $300,000 in revenue, and the ability of the organization to raise over $125,000 in new public and private institutional support. That new institutional support was made possible because of the transfer of debt that you supported last year, that then allowed SOPAC to fundraise with a clean balance sheet instead of a going concern clause in our audit. That act laid the foundation for everything great that has ensued from it. Thank you again for your bold and enlightened vision and your understanding of the value that SOPAC brings to this community. As a result of our posting this small surplus, and in appreciation of the steadfast support of the village, SOPAC is seeking a small reduction in its subsidy for 2015. SOPAC respectfully requests $279,500, which is a $10,000 reduction from 2014. Of paramount importance to the long-term health of SOPAC is to build cash reserves and endowment, two essential elements for institutional stability and greater self-sustainability. As SOPAC moved into FY15, the board and staff began a process of self-assessment and discussions about the future direction of the organization. The center retained the services of David and Nancy Grant, who are renowned nonprofit consultants, to shepherd SOPAC through a planning process that will culminate in a document to be ratified this spring, that articulates a new mission, vision, and roadmap for the institution, which includes financial sustainability. I will address this in greater detail later in this presentation. However, we expect that SOPAC's impact and value will grow with our strategic plan. The village's financial support is critical to this vision. SOPAC's current performing arts season is arguably the most ambitious, exciting, and diverse programming we've ever attempted. We've been incredibly fortunate to secure artists like Arlo Guthrie, David Bromberg, Judy Collins, Jorma Kalkinen, Keb Mo, John Hyatt, and Leon Russell, just to name a few of the luminaries who are gracing our stage in South Orange this year. Many of these artists play in much larger venues, but SOPAC is establishing a reputation as a boutique presenting house where audiences and artists have a superb experience. And the big news this year so far is that the South Orange Performing Arts Center has won the prestigious People's Choice Awards for Favorite Small Performing Arts Center for the entire state of New Jersey. Over 15,000 people voted in this process, and SOPAC's closest competition had less than half the votes. We are very proud of this accolade for the organization and for what it says about South Orange. Just six months into the season, SOPAC has already generated over $850,000 in ticket sales for all main stage performances, which is $150,000 more than was budgeted for the entire year. Yet we still have over 20 shows to present between now and the end of June, with more being added each week. Already in this fiscal year, our email list has grown by 4,000 addresses. Our average open rate on email announcements is 27% compared to an industry standard of 20%. Our Facebook likes have more than doubled, from 4,500 in FY14 to over 10,000 this year. Twitter followers have grown by 1,075 since January 2014. 47% of tickets have been purchased by patrons from outside of Essex County. Of the 40 performances SOPAC has presented on our main stage thus far, approximately half have had audiences that exceeded 75% of capacity. Arlo Guthrie, David Bromberg, Cherish the Ladies, Madis Yahoo, Rochelle Farrell, Get the Let Out, Madeline Peru, The Psychedelic Furs, John Pizzarelli, and Jorma Kalkinen were all completely sold out, and a few of you were at those shows. Over the course of the year, SOPAC will serve well over 50,000 people through all of its programs. Our data collected this year from patrons who have already attended events indicates that nearly 50% of audiences are dining in South Orange when they attend a SOPAC event. That's over 25,000 people pouring money into the economy of the downtown district in a single year. And while we cannot predict what our final attendance numbers will be, we continue to expect that over $1.5 million of economic activity in South Orange will be generated by SOPAC events through the ancillary spending of patrons at restaurants and retail outlets. As we consider the investment of public support for this organization, it is useful to consider the impact SOPAC has as an economic engine for this community. When I last appeared before you, you asked me to collect data on the mode of transportation people were taking to get to SOPAC. Here's what we've learned, but I suspect it won't make you happy. 94% drove, 4% walked, 1.65% took the train, and .17% took the bus. 34% of audiences reported traveling less than five miles to come to SOPAC. Parking is, of course, both a perceived and real problem for our patrons, especially when we host events on Monday through Friday during regular business hours. Over the past year, we've been involved in moving to a new internet ticketing platform. And while from a consumer perspective it has been a relatively easy transition, it has been excruciating for my staff to develop new reports and obtain patron data. It is a complex system that will simply take time for us to learn and to shape for our purposes. When we report back to you at the end of our season, we will have additional, more robust data to share with you. Last month, SOPAC hosted the New Jersey State Council on the Arts Poetry Out Loud Student Competition on February 11th. Seventeen regional high schools participated in this highly acclaimed national poetry competition. In the coming months, SOPAC will be hosting several important events. A convening of arts leaders from Essex, Union, Morris, and Somerset Counties to explore collaboration and mutual support on March 11th. The annual Business Leaders Breakfast in April, our date is yet to be determined. And SOPAC's annual gala on May 30th, which will honor South Orange educator and activist who is here in the audience tonight, Johanna Wright. And South Orange Maplewood School supporters Fred and Paul Profetta. The gala will feature a performance by Broadway luminary Brian Stokes Mitchell. As part of our partnership with the village, over the course of the year, SOPAC has been delighted to serve as your home away from home. For village government meetings, other meetings, parties, indeed in aggregate, SOPAC anticipates hosting over 65 meetings and events here on the main stage and in the loft, about twice as many as last year and approximately one-sixth of the calendar year. In addition to these meetings, we're proud to serve as the provider of cultural services for the village, which includes Giants of Jazz, Blues and Jazz in the Loft, the ever-popular Summer Concert Series on Flood's Hill, our newest enterprise, the Outdoor Summer Film Festival, and coming this spring, assisting with the inaugural multi-day festival called South by South Orange. When we quantify the value of these services alone to the village, our conservative estimate of that value exceeds $144,000. We would be happy to furnish you with the details on how this estimate was computed. As the summer came to a close, SOPAC reintroduced our very popular community engagement program called Playing Around South Orange. In cooperation with the village and SHU, six pianos painted by local artists were surreptitiously placed in strategic outdoor locations for the delight, entertainment, and enjoyment of local residents, students, and visitors to the town. This back-by-popular-demand initiative was sponsored this year by PNC Bank, and we expect to make this an annual happening in South Orange. SOPAC continues its strong partnership with Seton Hall University. This past fall, SHU sponsored an extraordinary performance by Carolyn Dorfman Dance, featuring the choreographer's moving work about the Holocaust, which is a core element of SHU's students' curricula. Fifty dance students from Columbia High School were also in attendance and stayed for a moderated panel discussion that followed the performance. And on the theme of dance, SOPAC was selected by the New Jersey State Council on the Arts for a prestigious cosponsorship of a choreographer showcase. The council provided SOPAC with an additional $35,000 of funding to present the work of three of New Jersey's preeminent choreographers, and Columbia High School dance students also attended this event. SOPAC has been working on developing a new website for the center, which we hope will launch in March. The new site will be easier to navigate, more visually attractive, and easier for our own staff to modify. SOPAC has struggled in the past year to find an appropriate and affordable chief financial officer. The tension has been about trying to find someone we can afford and provide us with sufficient time. Of late, we tried using a company that staffs key financial positions for nonprofits, but they proved costly and had significant personnel turnover. The net effect of this is that we kept reinventing the wheel, training new personnel, and not having adequate real-time data about finances. I feel confident that we have now fixed the problem with a bookkeeper who started last month and has worked with nonprofit organizations for many years. As I noted earlier, the center has been engaged in very intensive and productive strategic planning. This work included interviews with stakeholders in the community who provided us with very candid and helpful insights about what SOPAC is doing well and how it can improve its programming. The new document, which is nearing completion, will lay out a new mission and vision for the organization that broadens the center's focus from being almost exclusively a presenting house to providing a greater emphasis on serving the community and engaging it in multiple ways. The plan will also include the work of a new ad hoc committee, which is focused on the financial sustainability of SOPAC. The report of this committee will lay out a plan for increasing contributed revenue through a three-year campaign to establish sufficient cash reserves and endowment to protect the organization from the vagaries of economic shifts and unanticipated losses in revenue streams. Indeed, SOPAC has been reliant on the generosity of one particular individual who has sustained the organization for multiple years with six-figure donations. As his role in the organization diminishes, and he plans to leave South Orange, his level of support will dramatically decrease. Part of the ad hoc committee's charge will be to address the diminution in support from this individual. The anticipated completion date for the plan is April 1st. The document will be posted on our website, and the community will be encouraged to provide feedback about our new direction. The Board of Governors, Staff and Volunteers of SOPAC take great pride in the impact this center has in the quality of life for the people of South Orange. There is no doubt that the perception of this community as a vibrant, exciting, and culturally rich place to live is greatly affected by having a successful arts center in its midst. We're honored to play an integral part in the success of South Orange. This center has turned a corner and is on a trajectory to do great things in and for the people of the community. Thank you for your steadfast support, your recognition of the importance of this organization, and your commitment to ensuring that it flourishes and thrives. Thank you.
I would be happy to entertain any questions or comments.
Well, I'll start. First of all, that was, thank you for the report and actually what was even a story of great progress that you've shown and demonstrated through, you know, statistics and data that gives us, you know, a better sense of where we are. But I just want to point one thing out, which I think you referenced...
feedback about our new direction. The Board of Governors, Staff, and Volunteers of SOPAC take great pride in the impact this center has in the quality of life for the people of South Orange. There is no doubt that the perception of this community as a vibrant, exciting, and culturally rich place to live is greatly affected by having a successful arts center in its midst. We're honored to play an integral part in the success of South Orange. This center has turned a corner and is on a trajectory to do great things in and for the people of the community. Thank you for your steadfast support, your recognition of the importance of this organization, and your commitment to ensuring that it flourishes and thrives. I would be happy to entertain any questions or comments.
Well, I'll start. First of all, that was, thank you for the report and actually what was even a story of great progress that you've shown and demonstrated through, you know, statistics and data that gives us, you know, a better sense of where we are. But I just want to point one thing out, which I think you referenced a couple of things: the space, the performance space that we have, and how it's central to the village and its culture. But that doesn't come from just a really good booking director or a great venue. It really comes from what I would consider a culture of excellence and of service excellence. And so all the things that you pointed out, which are terrific, really emanate from one thing, and I don't mean to embarrass you, but it is the tone from the top. It is only accepting excellence, and it is making sure that everything that is done here... You talked about the experience of the audience as well as the performers, which is kind of an interesting perspective, that the whole experience, that when you come to SOPAC, what you uphold in terms of the staff and volunteers, there's many volunteers come here, come from, I would say, the culture of hospitality and service excellence. So, kudos to you for leading this.
Thank you, Trustee Schnell. Appreciate it.
I have a question in regards to, first of all, I want to say, I did owe you, but the loft, there, how is that as far as utilization? And how is that compared to 2013 and 2014 in revenue? What's the increase in the loft segregated from the main theater here?
Year-to-date, we see a decrease in revenue from the loft because we have more programming going on on our main stage. And there is a sound attenuation problem between the loft and the main stage, so that two amplified events cannot occur concurrently. So, our success on the main stage has a deleterious impact on the availability of the loft for any kind of amplified celebratory event. So, loft revenue is down marginally, but not significantly. We are working to explore programming during the day in the loft. That has its own challenges, because parking during the day, of course, is much more problematic than it is in the evening. But we are seeing if there are ways to be creative about using the loft in the afternoons. We're talking about a speaker series, for example, that might appeal to retirees as a way to bring people into the center who don't normally come to our concerts, but who would enjoy a midday cultural event. So that's something we'll be working on going forward.
Yeah, that's, and I was really curious about that because of your increased programming here, and I know that the acoustics don't allow for things happening. So, this is almost a question that's probably long-term, if ever, if it will make sense at all, because of the tremendous expense to address the acoustics. Is that something long-term that makes sense to happen, or is just too prohibitive that it probably will not happen as far as addressing the...
There may be some creative way to finance it through new market credits. I'm not sure. I mean, we're talking about roughly a half-million-dollar improvement.
I know, it was big.
So, we would have to have a very long horizon in terms of thinking about how we would recoup that.
Yeah, you'd have to justify the ROI.
Yeah.
Do you think the opening of the garage, I think it's 200 spaces that are just a few feet away from here, will that give you some option as far as parking availability to address daytime programming, to get better utilization of the loft?
Anything will help.
Okay.
Yes, it'll be very appreciated.
Thank you.
Yes, sure.
Mark, a couple of questions. First, a repeat of what I said last year, is I think that you're a great addition to SOPAC. I think presentation after presentation, what we see from you, you've really lived up to what I think everybody on the Board of Trustees and community had hoped that you would. So I thank you very much.
Thank you, Trustee Colm.
Your dedication is commendable. I just need to, the request for this year's budget, was that $279, you said, or $289?
That's correct, $279.5.
Just a few different things that I caught during the presentation. Back to the parking and what Trustee Davis Ford was saying, when you said that 94% of SOPAC patrons had drove, what type of sample population did you get from that?
I don't know the answer to that. I would have to get back to you. I mean, generally, we will ask that question of anybody who is either purchasing a ticket online or who completes a survey following a performance. So, I will, I'll get back to you on the universe of patrons who responded.
It's still discouraging, you know, because the parking challenge, when it starts to threaten the vibrancy of the Performing Arts Center, I was the one who had asked that question of you, I think it was like six or seven months ago, and I was hoping that we would see that more people are taking transit out of the 50% that aren't directly in South Orange, or they're utilizing alternative transportation to try and get to this facility rather than doing what people normally do in the downtown, which is circle around.
Well, here's the irony. We had three shows in the last month that were held in the middle of snowstorms, and we posted on our website that we encourage people to take mass transit. And they did. They took advantage of it. And remarkably, one of the shows that we had, I would say, 75% of the patrons showed up, the median age was well over 70, and most of them came via the train. So, we can hope for more snowstorms. But it was fascinating to me that people actually really did...
When you encourage it, yeah. And I know that the South Orange Village Center Alliance, who's in the audience, and Mr. Zuckerman is, I know that they've been talking about wayfinding signage, because for a lot of people, if they don't know our downtown very well, they keep looking in the same lot, whereas there's a lot of municipal facilities or public parking that's available, but without the direction, you don't know how to actually get there. So hopefully, we'll see some of that. And then next, as we get to the budget, and you had brought it up with the 65 meetings that you do for the village, all the additional items, love movies in the park, Frozen, singing, I was singing, kids were singing, it was great. But we keep referring to this "support" that we give SOPAC as a subsidy, when in reality, the bulk of it is a service-level agreement that we've engaged with you and your staff for village services, that otherwise, we would be paying our Baird Recreation staff, et cetera, to be doing, or we would be paying a facility to host meetings like this, or our planning board, or statutory boards, et cetera. So I think what will be helpful, too, is when you present the budget, and I believe you did it before at the request of Trustee Levison, is making it very clear, there is the actual subsidy, our investment in culture and the arts, et cetera, but there's actually the service level of agreement that is our agreement. And it's helpful for people to know that we're not just giving money, that there are expectations between both entities.
Thank you, Trustee Colm. I appreciate that. And I would actually love to get away from the word subsidy and talk about investment, because that really is what this is about.
And the last, thank you for that. And the last thing was, again, I've got this wicked memory. The last time that I had questioned you about the budget, you had basically gone over that you would be embarking on the strategic planning process. My concern was, not that you weren't delivering, but that we had these ups and downs, and managing expectations with the public has been a roller coaster ride prior to your arrival, where we had set ambitious goals, but then we fell short. We set ambitious goals, we fell short, and what I think the board was looking for was some level of managing expectations. What can we really expect? And when you were first brought on board, we put forward an ambitious, very ambitious goal of turning over the rent from bowtie, et cetera, phasing out the subsidy. I think now we know that's not realistic. In fact, you stated that to the Board of Trustees last year. So, through the strategic planning process, I was hoping, and we were hoping, and I'm sure you were hoping, to really make a clear picture of what the expectation is from the taxpayers, from the service-level agreements, et cetera, moving forward that's realistic, that there's never a, you know, shock of why are we seeing this request at this level again?
Right.
And so with April 2015, I believe, was the date that you said, which is a little bit longer than we had hoped, but again, it's better to do it thoughtful and get it right than redo it again. Do you anticipate, and we have a great liaison in Trustee Schnell, but do you anticipate presenting to the community once that planning process is complete to kind of show the public the direction and how this correlates to the financial service-level agreement and investment you're requesting of the village itself?
Well, what I would say is that what we're going to give primacy to is building cash reserves. That is something that this organization does not have. And, you know, I will be very frank. I mean, SOPAC is a house of cards without that cash reserve to protect the organization, as I said in my presentation, from the vagaries of economic downturn, unforeseen drops in contributed or earned revenues. Any good company, any good nonprofit, has that comfort zone, that cushion, and SOPAC doesn't. And so I think the charge of this committee, first and foremost, has to be to address that in the near term, over the next three years, so that there is that level of stability to this organization. And then beyond that, there is the issue of how does SOPAC become more self-sustaining? But, you know, the sources of unearned revenue that SOPAC receives are substantial, and they're needed in a facility this size. A 439-seat theater is a very odd size for an organization, you know, that's basically a nonprofit presenting house right now.
I think the, sorry, the question went on for a while. I watch too much Law &amp; Order. I think the, it was more that, once you complete and adopt the strategic plan for SOPAC, will you share that with the community?
Absolutely. I think I said in the presentation, that will be posted online.
That would be fantastic.
Not only will it be posted online, but we're going to encourage feedback. We want to know what the community thinks...
Great.
...of the new direction for the organization, both from a programmatic and qualitative standpoint, and also from a financial, economic one.
And the folks that you hired, just a little kudos to them that you can pass along. I sat down with them also, and I thought they did a really great job. I think they understood the institution, they clearly understood nonprofits and the arts, and so I hope that that final product is something that will sustain us for the long term, so we get away from the roller coaster.
Appreciate that. Appreciate that feedback.
Are there any other questions or comments?
Mark, you know, I echo what most of them say. It is disconcerting about the losing the train ridership, because I thought we'd gotten, I thought we'd been up to like 20, 25% at one time, getting, you know, and I think Menopause and Musical had a lot to do with that, because that was one that evidently drove a lot of people to go by train. But I didn't, and you might have missed it, I might have missed it, was one of the things that, I don't know if you heard yours, how much programming is Seton Hall doing now? Because they were supposed to be a strategic partner.
They are still, and they're in the facility over 40 days a year.
Okay.
And we're looking for new and creative ways to partner with them. The example of the Carolyn Dorfman Dance Project was one. They're now a strategic partner, as we are with the village in South by South Orange. I think it's a very positive relationship. We've got a lovely letter today from somebody in, trying to remember which department it was, Philosophy, or it's one of, maybe one of the performing arts departments, who had been involved in a presentation of Shakespeare in Chinese, and they were here for two nights, and he wrote this glowing letter about the quality and care and service that he received from the SOPAC staff.
One of the other things about the parking, and what they were trying to work on with the new building, which I'm the village administrator myself, working for New Jersey Transit, to do some kind of swap, to help free up 30 or 40 spaces in the Jersey Transit lot, which I know would not be tremendous, but it would allow you to do some daytime things in the loft, if you had that number of parking spaces, I believe it would help greatly towards that.
It would certainly help. And, you know, even when we have dignitaries and visiting VIPs, it's just so helpful, if we don't have to be worrying about that. And Mark Hartwick has been fantastic in terms of accommodating us and helping us in those special circumstances, but it would really be terrific if there were some dedicated spaces for the organization.
Thank you for the good presentation, Nocturne.
Any other?
Well, I'll just end by, you know, echoing a lot of what has been said. I mentioned this in my State of the Village the other week, which was just upstairs in the loft, that what's become interesting in my mind, and I think the minds of a lot of people in town, aside from sort of the more quantifiable, statistical evidence that you're presenting with SOPAC's success, is that it's become harder and harder to imagine living in South Orange without SOPAC. And, you know, it's almost like it's been here forever, even though it obviously hasn't. And I think when you start getting that mindset in people who live in town, it goes from kind of being something, I'm not sure what the best word is, to being an institution. And that's a really important kind of cultural and attitude transformation among people who come here. I certainly see that more and more with people who live in town, where it's just kind of like, oh, what are you doing? Oh, well, we're going to a show at SOPAC. It's just like kind of a more natural thing, and it's not like people having, and this is certainly not for everybody, but for people not having to be reminded to go see what's happening at SOPAC. They're just, that's one of the first stops they make when thinking about, well, I've got friends coming in from town, and what are we going to do to entertain them when they're here? My comedy shows don't sell out at all, unfortunately, but people do come here. And so anyway, I thought that was sort of an interesting qualitative measurement of SOPAC's success, and there's obviously still work to be done, but kudos to you and everybody on the board and to all the staff here, really just taking this to where it is, and it's a really great place.
Thank you very much, President Torpe.
We have one other presentation this evening, and that is from the Farrowfield Neighborhood Association.
I know it was a PDF file that I think had been set up, so I don't know if it's a...
Just hit blank screen.
Oh, yeah, okay. There we go. All right. I don't know if there's a full screen mode to make it a little bigger, but otherwise, we will continue. So thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for having the Farrowfield Park Conservancy here this evening. My name is Ron Charles, and we're really excited to talk to you about the alternative uses for the former JAC building. So, a couple of things that we'd like to do this evening. Certainly, we'd like to present our vision for what the building can present to the community and how that can integrate into the River Greenway Master Plan. Certainly, we'd like to ensure and demonstrate that there's a benefit for both the village and the community as a whole, and align kind of what our vision is and what we see the building really providing to the community with the town's needs and some of the things that can help the town in some of those items. So certainly, looking to work closely with you guys. In terms of that, a little bit about who we are. We are a South Orange neighborhood and community organization that has been around for over 11 years. Our goal is to preserve and enhance Farrowfield Park for all generations, and to really encourage an open space conservation of the woods and surrounding wetlands, which you'll see a little bit on the area, the overviews that we'll have up here in the presentation. So, in terms of the big picture, we're really looking to help identify a tenant for this building that'll complement and support the River Greenway Master Plan, and really lay the groundwork for developing the southern segment that includes not only the Farrowfield Park, but the upcoming pedestrian bridge, Wetlands Park, as well as Chiswic Field, which is right there on the border of South Orange and Maplewood. So, to touch on the master plan a little bit, certainly, we see that this provides a really strong foundation for improving connections between these adjacent neighborhoods, not only the parks, but all of the town and residents around them, and really preserve and improve access to recreation, both active and passive in the area, and provide a safe and continuous pedestrian and bicycle connections through this corridor. Again, to touch on some of the overviews of the master plan, really, one of the things that spoke to us about from the master plan document that really tied in well with the location of this building, is the master plan does talk about seizing opportunities as they become available. And you'll see a little blow-up of the area in the next two slides, and it really presents an incredible opportunity related to the southern segment, tying, being located really directly between the two downtowns of the two neighboring towns, and being a phase that can be initiated as opportunities present themselves, as we see this being an incredible opportunity. Certainly, one of the things that we'd like to stress as well, too, is how we see the reuse of this building and the improvement of this southern segment of the master plan... reuse of this building, and the improvement of this southern segment of the master plan, really being an opportunity to continue to revitalize the economy, ecology, and the quality of life in South Orange and the neighboring towns. So this is a image taken from the master plan that is posted on the township's website. The shaded areas in purple are coloring that we had added on to call out a few specific areas. And to go to a blow-up of the area, there at the top of the screen is Farrowfield Park, located along Walton Avenue. As you turn down the access road to the DPW, which is shown just to the right of Farrowfield Park, the available building will be on your right, that's the purple square. And then as you move on down towards the water, the highlighted number three is the location of the current pump house, which we understand to be planned for demolish, with the pedestrian bridge going in, again, as our understanding is this year. So we really see this kind of trifecta area of the Farrowfield Park, Chiswick Field, and Waterlands Park, especially when that pedestrian bridge comes into play, to be really something that's going to draw people to this area. This is a rendering of that bridge. Essentially, this is taken from the west side of the water, or a mock-up from the west side of the water, where Chiswick Field would be to your right. So some of the things that really kind of speak to us in terms of what the master plan means are some aspects of other public spaces, including areas such as the Orange Reservoir Walkway, right here in South Mountain Reservation, and even as close as Jersey City, with the ongoing efforts in relation to the Sixth Street Embankment. Naperville, Illinois, also has a successful river walk, and certainly, the crown jewel of public space reuse is the High Line, which everybody can certainly always like to aspire to. So what's our vision? In terms of the building, with ideal tenant criteria, certainly, we want to integrate the community. We see that the people who will use the space and benefit from it can really help provide the need for the community. Certainly, aspects will be that they are a self-sustaining source of revenue, provide that increase to a quality of life for Soma residents, and really benefit kind of all stakeholders and all members of the community who may be involved in the area. One of our proposals, and this is just one of a number of proposals, is that a great opportunity for this building could be a child daycare center. Given its proximity to the two downtowns, short walking and biking distance from the train stations, given a stable business model, it could really provide to a growing demand of young families and young children in the area, and really could work well. But this is not only the idea that we have. Certainly, there are a number of really interesting ideas that we could really see utilizing this 5,200-square-foot space to a really excellent manner. And that would include a shared workspace, certainly, understanding if there's any needs from the village directly, that could be seen to, would be a great aspect, and sort of an office space for other professionals who could use it, a senior daycare center, an artist studio. Certainly, we are not trying to tread on Sopac's excellence with a performance space, or something related to recreation in terms of a bike shop, or something equally significant for the parks. Now, we do understand there are community needs, and we certainly understand that there are aspects that this building is being considered for. And certainly, we've outlined a few what we see as economically viable options for the building, but certainly, we understand that one that the village must solve soon is how to care for recovered animals within South Orange and Maplewood. And we certainly understand that that is a significant aspect to see to, that there is a provision for that. Now, in terms of how we handle animal control, again, I mentioned that the building is 5,200 square feet. It is really quite a large space, and we see that for Soma's need, in 2014, an estimated number of dogs picked up in the towns was 16, and a majority of those were returned to the owners. Certainly, we see that leveraging social media and other digital means can really be a strong benefit to the town in terms of returning the animals to their families. And certainly, we see since January 2015, there have only been two dogs so far picked up by the Jersey City, sorry, the South Orange Animal Control, and both returned to their families on the same day, due to the use of Facebook Nextdoor and other means. Certainly, we'd like the town to take a look at what other options, you know, can be provided for with vets, shelters, or private businesses that are nearby, because we do understand that we want families to be able to get this member of their family, their dog or cat, back as soon as possible for when the worst happens, if they do sneak out. Now, one thing we would like to emphasize is we'd really be excited to work together, the Conservancy and the Township. And so what we are looking to ask for specifically, is we understand there is an RFP under consideration for animal services use of the building. And what we'd like to ask is that there is a second RFP issued for an opportunity to focus the building use on some of these recommended community services that we really can see benefiting not only the bottom line of the Township of South Orange, but also still providing that means for, for community benefit. As an alternative, something we certainly would be eager to recommend to the board, would be if an RFP, one singular RFP can be issued, such that all categories above could be integrated into that RFP, to really ensure that the best provider for the town come into the space and really help bring the building use to a new level. In terms of the next steps, certainly, we understand the RFPs will be issued, so we're looking forward to that. The Conservancy is very eager to provide any advisory assistance on the decision-making for the building use, if possible. Certainly, regardless of the building use, because we are focused on having something that really provides the best need to the community, the Conservancy is eager to cooperate with the village in connecting these parks into building upon this pedestrian bridge that will bring people to this area, to really make the Greenway Master Plan something that can really expand just the incredible layout and quality of life that we actually already have here, and take for granted here in South Orange, because it is really wonderful. I would like to encourage everyone here to kind of take a look at that master plan. I know it's on the southorange.org, and those who are watching the live stream or here in the audience to also kind of take a look at it, because it is an excellent resource, and is quite inspiring. With that, I'd like to thank you all for your time and having us here. And for those, I'm sure the presentation could be included with the documents from this meeting, but again, as everything is digital these days, we'd be eager to post it on our Facebook page as well. So again, many thanks.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments from any trustees?
You said it sounds like a discussion item later. You're doing that now.
Yeah, we might as well do it now while they're here.
Is that okay with you, Trustee Levison? Where did you, I know that you and Trustee Clark were both kind of liaisons as a result of our discussion with including the neighborhood. Have you guys had a chance to review some of their requests? Have you reviewed it with staff? Is there any recommendation based on what their requests are that you want the board to consider?
Yes, we haven't had a chance to. Let me just start by saying, Richard, and Kathy, and Dan, and they're not, thank you to everybody from Farrowfield for, one, Richard, for your leadership on this, but also for putting so much time and energy, and frankly, creative thought into problem-solving on this. Personally, I'm pretty excited that we have what is basically a community input series of options bubbling up. And to Sheena's question, no, we don't have a recommendation yet. We haven't gotten anything numbers-wise to look at, which is ultimately going to be a big consideration. But frankly, it's nice to have some options, things to think about, so.
Yeah, I've had dialogue with Richard on many, on a couple occasions, and in fact, pushed to have this presentation, so that we can look at more than just the animal shelter aspect, that we could see if we could utilize the facility for, other than the shelter, to have it as part of the community, as part of Farrowfield, and as well as something that can be developed for the whole township itself. I think it fits in well with what we're trying to do in the park, extending ourselves between the two communities. Our extension for path to go down into Maplewood and to Chiswick Field, part of our demolition of the pump house and the construction of the bridge, ties these pieces together. I think it works well. I would recommend to go with an RFP that included both, but that's something that we should discuss, if that's a feasible way of doing it. I think Barry and Adam have been working on looking at the RFP process, but I think that's a good direction. The other, the other comment is, is that I think this shows that a working, a good working relationship between the board and a community group, and I hope we can do the same thing when we talk about water and the pump house, and the things that we want to do in that extent.
I'd like to ask you if you had considered, and I think, Richard discussed with me another idea that I thought was intriguing for the use of that building, and that was maybe a partnership with the YMCA. And that's a organization that doesn't have to be vetted. It has been successful for decades and decades of delivering a multitude of programs to not only young people, but of people of all ages. And, and we're a very active recreational-oriented community. So I would like to hear your thoughts about that, or is that something you're prepared to talk about, as how you see that as an option?
I think we certainly would agree that that is an incredible option. I think it certainly aligns with the goals of recreation, and with improving the access for all members of the community. And again, even with both young and old, the YMCA just has such an incredible breadth of programs that, you know, we would like to think that there would be a great opportunity for them there. Certainly, we don't want to speak for them directly, but, you know, we would be eager to, as part of this, reach out to them and continue a dialogue that would allow an opportunity like that to expand and flourish. And that's really what we're looking to do here with the RFP process, to have that opportunity to seize something along those lines.
That is already begun, and in fact, the YMCA had a walkabout last week.
Yeah, that's good to know. Richard, see, I really listen. I pay attention.
Yeah, the only concern I would have about the YMCA is we probably would have to deal with the traffic concerns in a small neighborhood. There really is only one street there as an access, and I don't know how many people the YMCA would bring in, but can deal with that with a traffic study. But I wouldn't want to bring in an extraordinary amount of traffic in there. So if the YMCA was using it as an adjunct building for a partial program, it would be one thing. But Adam, I wanted to ask you about the numbers that he floated up there about the dogs that have, those numbers were retrieved from you for them?
I actually think those numbers came from our animal control officer, but they seem, they seem correct.
Okay, so we're talking a minimal amount of dogs from South Orange, one to two dogs a month.
Yes.
Which, you know, sort of raises other questions about the shelter and so forth, and it's like, I would, makes, we could almost, we could almost work a joint venture with a local vet on handling the dogs.
I think there are a lot of possibilities that are out there.
I think, you know, going out for both RFPs, I'm not quite sure how you do an RFP on this space, it does sound interesting, you know, to at least consider some of those possibilities. And I'm sure there's other people who have other ideas, so try and keep the RFP as open as we could to community-based shops or programs, and repurposing the building for whatever it is. And of course, we have to discuss whether we have any other needs for our own village needs, because it is our building. So, but it's definitely, it's definitely, it's definitely an interesting thing to explore, to take to the next level.
Absolutely. I think the village is in a unique position where we have the ability to kind of solicit or request as many options that, you know, that are out there. Hopefully, what we'll be able to do is, whether we issue one RFP, two RFP, we have, we have to kind of see what our legal obligations are, you know, with renting a building, and what is the, at the process of, as we get a whole bunch of, you know, different opportunities, how we can pick them. But once we do that, and I, and I think you guys will have a variety of options to choose from, you know, the more the better.
Is this building, is Maplewood involved in this at all, still?
Maplewood is involved in, or is provided input into the RFP for the sheltering options. But the RFP will come from South Orange, it will be a South Orange initiative. They just kind of give us some two cents, a little bit, just to help us out a little.
Did you say the building was 10,000 square feet?
Sorry, 5,200, single floor.
Do you know the overall dimensions of the lot size, like, existing right now with the parking that's there?
We can get that to you. We do have that available.
Do you know Adam off that?
It's actually not a separate lot, it's part of the overall, you got to parcel it, so the lot size. Yeah, but there was a general description when the lease was entered into.
Okay. And so I think I interpret from, I was pulling up on my laptop what you had sent us previously.
Sure.
The neighborhood is opposed to anything relating to serving the purposes of an animal shelter, moving forward. Because if it's not listed in the first uses, primary, secondary, third, if it's nowhere on the page, it's far away.
I think we see that there is a benefit for an alternative use, in that the building may not necessarily even be constructed in the best means for that use, but also that given the opportunities and given the numbers in relation to the need of the community with animal services for those dogs and cats that South Orange and Maplewood have, that really, the opportunity to kind of gain an economic benefit for the town by taking advantage of this building being available, could really kind of offset and end up being a net positive, not only from the community service, in terms of the active use, but also even just from the bottom line, the hard numbers when it comes down to it, too.
Underst-, gotcha. Why don't the, instead of kind of going through this a little bit more tonight, why don't we continue the path that Trustee Clark and Trustee Levison are working on with the Neighborhood Association? I don't think, from, based on the comments, nobody is opposed to exploring these more. The idea of circulating more options for the board to consider is a good thing, so why don't we allow them to continue that discussion, and when there's something more substantial to decide on, we bring it back to the board.
I'm fine with that.
I guess my one question, Barry, in your experience, do you feel like if we do go with a, an RFP that's just an open repurposing RFP, do you feel like you'll get likely enough real feedback that we can make a decision based upon that? I'm just worried that if it's so generic and open-ended, that it...
No, I think it would be in our interest, and I think we're willing to, if we want to go out for a broader lease, essentially, and, you know, if it was just on the open market, as opposed to something specifically for one of our operations, it would have to be a competitive leasing process, but we would be allowed to, within that, RFP.
He can't hear you.
Acceptable uses. Well, we need it appropriately. So, you know, again, how much you're going to get, and what kind of feedback is going to be part of how well it's publicized, how well it's marketed, and how flexible you are, and what the permitted uses are. But I do think that we've already had some interest from some of the uses that have been mentioned here. So I think if we, if it's worded appropriately, as long as we're all in the same age of what would be acceptable uses, if we, you know, broadly, it's possible to find that and market it, and it's adequate time to make sure it's out to the public and prospective vendors for enough time, you know, in public, we can get some response.
Can we put this up on the website?
Barry? This presentation? Can we also see if we can make Ron stand there longer?
I didn't want to awkwardly walk away. In that case, thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, I would like to open the meeting up for public comments. So if there's anybody who wishes to speak, there's a microphone right down there at the bottom. Seeing as nobody wishes to speak.
Oh, yeah, come on.
I got people.
On anything?
On anything.
Anything you like. Anything you can fit in three minutes.
Good eve-
This time?
Yeah. Good evening. I'm Pat Morrissey. I've lived at 10 Walnut Court for the last 30 years in South Orange. This is the fourth time I've been in this room in the last 10 days. I had to pay the other three times.
Wait, you didn't pay when you came in?
We can charge you again.
Not that these two presentations weren't entertaining, they really were.
You can have an exit fee tonight.
So maybe I'm just in the demographic sweet spot for Sopac programming, but three times for performances in the last 10 days is perhaps my record. My wife and I are annual donors to Sopac, and I'm here to ask you to... My wife and I are annual donors to SOPAC, and I'm here to ask you to approve the budget item that's before you. Obviously, this is not just a performing arts venue, it's a builder of the local economy, and it's an image builder for our village. And it is interesting what Village President Torpe said, that it's now just become kind of normal to say, "So what are you doing? Oh, we're going to see Janice Ian at SOPAC." And it no longer sounds that unusual, that we're staying in town to see something that's really fantastic. It's something that sets us apart from the nearby suburbs, and it's obviously becoming more than, than just a venue, it's a, it's a producer of, of community events. So, I just think it's grown into something fantastic. I've been a fan of SOPAC from, from the beginning, but it was, you know, a while coming until it kind of grew into itself, and I think it really has now. I think it, anyhow, I urge you to approve the budget item in front of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Tony Leitner, I'm the chairman of the board of SOPAC, I am now a South Orange resident. The first time I've ever been able to say that to you.
Oh, really? Welcome, welcome, welcome!
I'm really a dual resident, but I sleep here. I want to thank the trustees for all the support that you've given to SOPAC over the 10 years that I've been involved. We are coming to our 10th season, I'm very proud that we are about to embark on our 10th season. This is my sixth year as chair, in June I will be stepping off as chair, I will stay on the board for a couple more years, commuting from just across the line in our neighboring state, so I intend to stay involved. I want to speak, Mark has spoken about eloquently about our strategic plan, I'm happy to see it developed in a way that I, I think is really, speaks to the board's vision and the staff's vision, the staffs are very involved in this, of what we should be going forward. We, we talk about balance sheets all the time, and we talk about it only in financial terms, but I would like to suggest to you that there is another factor which I think was reflected in some of your remarks. Every balance sheet has an item called goodwill. To me, for a performing arts center and for a nonprofit, goodwill is kind of something else. It is that feeling that the community has, that is translated in its willingness to support the organization. And I'm not talking about the building, I'm talking about what in essence we are. So my vision for SOPAC to two or three years from now is that we will be successful, and our strategic plan will be successful. If the goodwill factor in, in the way we look at SOPAC has grown substantially, yes, we need to have a, a, a balance sheet that continues to have positive net equity, yes, we need to have a reserve, yes, we need to have continuing, a good support from a variety of sources, the three legs of, of funding that sustain any performing arts center. But we also need to have, in my view, SOPAC seen in our two communities, both South Orange and Maplewood, and in surrounding communities, but certainly in South Orange and Maplewood, I want to emphasize Maplewood, as being important to the two communities as the school system is. We value the school system, we do more for this school system, the arts are still celebrated in the schools, it's an enormous factor. I can see us really growing to be more than just seen as a space. That's my goal and vision. That will help if you trustees continue to share that vision with us on the board and to drive us forward. So I thank you for listening to us, for the support you've given, the two things, the significant things, the board's decision to move into the current governing model that we have, our decision to hire Mark, Steve Lurie, to do the programming, and the great staff that, that Mark has had. So we're doing our share, we're moving forward, we look at you as our strategic partners in this. Seton Hall is a strategic partner, we look at the potentiality for other strategic partners. I include, as a continuing taxpayer in Maplewood, to see them as a strategic partner too. Why not? So going forward, I'm very optimistic, I've always been too optimistic, I'm certainly one of the reasons why, you know, you can criticize us for being, you know, promising too much. So I'm not going to promise anything more than to say, to share with you my vision and hope that we attain it. So thank you very much for all the support that you've given us in the past.
Thank you.
Hello.
I was about to fall asleep, wake up, wake up, wake up. I'm Joanna Wright, I'm resident of South Orange for a number of years, and I want to just say a few things about SOPAC. And first of all, the, the report that Mark gave wouldn't have happened without your support, and that support is vital. And as I look at SOPAC and I'm thinking about where we are, I know that you are as excited as we are about the new SOPAC, because this is the, it's like I want to sing, "Can't you see a brand-new day?" I see a brand-new day for us, and it's here. So I'm going to ask for your continued support, and the things that I wanted to say were already said by Tony and Mark, duh, you didn't leave anything, but I'm really, really excited about what's happening, especially as we look at what we're doing to work with the high school, Columbia High School, with the dance program, the English department, theater, the music department, it's really, really vital, especially now when you're looking at budget cuts and things that kids don't have, and I'm watching the clock. But I want to encourage you to continue the support so that we can continue to soar. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anybody else who wishes to speak at this point? Okay, I'd like to close public comments and move on to ordinances for second reading.
Ordinance 2015-02, second reading and public hearing of an ordinance amending the code of the township...
Can you speak into the mic? I can barely hear you.
Second reading and public hearing of an ordinance amending the code of the township of South Orange Village, Sections 92-200.3, 92-200.5, and Schedule 1 of Chapter 92, permitted permissible uses for District's PRCB, Plan Residential, and Cluster B.
Thank you. From my understanding, Mr. Lewis, you spoke to this at the planning board meeting, do you want to give a brief recap of that and why I think the action tonight is going to be to table this ordinance?
Yeah, and I actually think it actually would be to withdraw this ordinance pending reintroduction of a new ordinance that will be, you know, substantially...
Speak into the mic.
Or at least materially different, so then maybe we require reintroduction of a separate ordinance. Essentially, this would be one that was intended to address the potential use of the undeveloped acreage under original site, and we have the number of concerns with it as...
Bless you.
Both as in related to the application of the provisions for how development would be permitted, but also as in related to the balance of the acreage of the property. So I would recommend that we formally withdraw this ordinance, and then we will be, and continue to work on reboot, coming up with essentially what would be a new ordinance.
Is it on?
It is on, but it's up.
Go to speak.
Will be a new ordinance, which ideally may be ready as soon as the March 23rd.
Okay, thank you.
Can I add that I think this should, because we're looking at a new ordinance, if we can bring it back to Trustee Rosner's committee for planning and zoning, if we can, before we get a brand-new ordinance that it hasn't been vetted by the board yet?
Yeah, I mean, if it's substantially different enough that people feel that it has to come back to...
If it's substantial enough, yeah.
So perhaps that's something that Mr. Lewis can communicate with Trustee Rosner about.
I think it should.
As long as Trustee Rosner is involved, because he's been kind of the liaison in working with the neighborhood on some of the things that are being addressed in the revisions, so I'm content with it, it doesn't even have to be the committee, but...
The timeline, we have a planning and zoning committee meeting tomorrow night, I know we want to get this on the agenda for the 23rd, which means we'll have to have another meeting or at least a, a working conversation. So Barry and Steve, do you have any idea when we'll have a new ordinance to consider?
Well, I think the, conceptually, the certain issues that need to be cleaned up as in place, the existing acreages, I think it's all relatively straightforward, the actual details of the specific wording may not be available, but, you know, even as, I have to probably give you something for tomorrow night, in terms of this is how we're addressing the issue of what could or couldn't be built, and also the issue of the balance of the acreage.
Okay, I'll take it up.
Okay.
Okay, so could I have a motion to, to file this ordinance?
I'm going to withdraw it.
Okay, moved by Trustee Levinson.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Column. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions?
Do we need a voice vote?
To withdraw an ordinance, I don't think we need a voice vote, it's just procedural, if anyone feels otherwise.
It's unanimous.
All right, next.
2015-03, second reading and public hearing of an ordinance requiring property owners to maintain a safe line of sight at intersections and adopting the State of New Jersey standard for such line of sight.
Okay, seeing as this is the second reading of this ordinance, I'd like to open this up for public hearing. Does any member of the public wishes to speak about this?
Can you explain it?
I actually wanted to move to strike this one. Because we had intended to retool it, brought it through Public Works to retool it, and then to Public Safety, but we're still waiting on a little bit of comment from the PD themselves, and then from Mr. Rother to rework it a little bit with the village engineer. So we do intend to introduce a new version of this, and so...
All right.
And that's similar to the, again, I've seen the, it's a complete reworking of the whole methodology, so it's a substantive change, we require a whole reintroduction of the ordinance, it's not just a amendment.
Okay, so that was a motion by Trustee Clark to withdraw this ordinance as well.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Column, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Okay, withdrawn.
Ordinance 2015-04, second reading and public hearing of a bond ordinance authorizing capital improvements by and for the township of South Orange Village in the County of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating an aggregate amount of $2,575,000, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of not exceeding $2,446,250 in aggregate principal amount of bonds or notes to finance part of the cost thereof.
Okay, thank you. Are we striking this one too, or?
No, we need this one.
Seeing as this is the second reading, is there any member of the public who wishes to comment on this ordinance?
Can we have Barry do a recap?
Yeah, sure. Nobody? Seeing as though there are no members of the public who wish to comment on this ordinance, are there any comments or questions from any of the trustees?
Yes, I'd just like Barry to just give a quick summary of what this means, again.
Mr. Lewis, Trustee Davis asked if you could just give a quick summary of this ordinance.
This is our initial capital ordinance, the, of the items in it, the bulk of it, that relates to village facilities, some are all which could be used on village hall, the pedestrian bridge, we deliberately did it with some flexibility in mind, the other items are public works vehicles and IP equipment and infrastructure.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I move.
Moved by Trustee Column. Seconded by Trustee Levinson. Could we have the roll, please?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Column?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnall?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move on to the consent agenda.
Resolutions 2015-45 through resolutions 2015-55 are listed on the consent agenda.
Okay, are there any questions or comments on any of the consent agenda items?
Just a quick comment to the, one, renaming the, what was originally passed about a year and a half ago, the Irvington Avenue Corridor Advisory Committee, as you know, at the request of the committee members, they want to expand their membership because there's a lot of stuff going on. Obviously, with the new rebranding of Seton Village, they want to make sure that was reflected in the resolution, so as discussed in closed session, they were able to solicit a lot of great new volunteers, businesses, residents, et cetera, and then it still has the exact two primary trustee liaisons, the alternate, the alternates, and our village administrator from our staff. So it's amended and restated for the membership purposes.
Okay. Unless there's any other questions that are coming?
I move.
Motion by Trustee Davis Ford.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Column. Could we have the roll, please?
Trustee Column?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnall?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is an appointment that I am happy to make to the library board, so this is 2015-VPO2, and this is my appointment of Frizan Maqdun as a trustee to the South Orange Public Library Board. So congratulations. Resolutions for separate action.
Okay, resolutions 2015-24A, resolution approving South Orange Village Center Alliance, FY 2015, operating budget and public hearing.
So seeing as this is technically the second reading of this resolution, this is also the public hearing, so if there's anybody who wishes to make any comments about the, about this resolution in particular, may do so now. And seeing as there's no members of the public who wish to make a comment, I'd like to close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I move.
Moved by Trustee Column. Seconded by Trustee Davis Ford. Could I have the roll, please?
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnall?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Column?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution 2015-56, resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of loan agreements to be executed by the township of South Orange Village in the County of Essex, State of New Jersey, and each of the New Jersey Environmental Infrastructure Trust and the State of New Jersey, acting by and through the Department of Environmental Protection, and further authorizing the execution and delivery of an escrow agreement, all pursuant to the 2015 New Jersey Environmental Infrastructure Trust financing program.
Okay, are there any questions or comments? Could I have a motion?
I move.
Moved by Trustee Column, seconded by Trustee Levinson. Could we have the roll, please?
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnall?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Column?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to the reports. I'm going to keep mine super short tonight, these are basically announcements I should have made in the beginning. First is, happy birthday, Trustee Levinson.
Happy birthday! And many more.
He made us promise not to sing.
Okay.
We'll sing.
And he gets to go to the senior prom now.
Well, you can call him Trustee Rosner.
No, Trustee Rosner is the door prize.
I rescinding my RCP. So just a couple other quick things, I just wanted to thank not just the board trustees, but the department heads and all of our staff as well. I delivered our state of the village the other night, and I won't run through the entire one hour and 15 minute talk again right now.
Oh, it seems so much longer.
Yeah, yeah, I know, time went by quickly.
I moved to a chart.
Not so fast. But I do want to thank everybody for participating in that, not only from the village side, but also all the residents and community members and leaders that were there. It was a very exciting, I think, attitude that I feel in South Orange, and just the amount of progress that we've made, and the amount that we're going to continue to make, and that so much of it is driven by people who live in town, as we've seen tonight on multiple occasions on a few different issues. So that's really incredible. If you do want to watch it, or you do want to read the transcript, or you want to read the shorter summary, you can go to southorange.org and you can find that, the video is up there, the transcript is up there, and the summary is up there as well. So really pleased to be able to do that, hopefully delivering the annual address will be a tradition that continues. That was something that I started in 2011, so I'm required by the charter to deliver an update to the board of trustees in writing, and that was something that I thought would be great to make a tradition that we do as an event to celebrate not just the work that we've done, but also talk about what we need to do. And so I just want to thank everybody again for participating in that. And again, you know, we've done a lot of incredible work, and I think... And again, you know, we've done a lot of incredible work, and I think risen above a lot of the divisiveness that existed in town before to just do good work. And that's really exciting to be a part of. It is not something that happens everywhere. And the people up on the stage all deserve a lot of credit for that. The one last thing which should have been in the announcements is, I think this went out to people who are signed up with New Jersey Transit, let me just make sure I get the date right, March 16th. This train station downtown will, that'll be the first day going forward, it'll be closed overnight from 2:00 to 5:00 a.m., so the South Orange Police Department will go around and lock it up. That is just something that people, everybody should be aware of, that is a change. And I think New Jersey Transit will be posting some signs and stuff around the station to make sure everybody knows that is happening. And that's everything I've got. Mr. Lewis?
Yeah, and I will also be brief, for among other reasons I was used to, and I think with all the meeting cancellations, we got off our new schedule. We had been on the second meeting of the month, but just a couple of brief highlights, and then I assume by the next meeting we'll get back on schedule in terms of, it used to be four trustees, first meeting, two trustees, village president, myself, second meeting. But a couple of things, we did open, we did receive four bids for the renovation of Village Hall on Thursday, they were pre-qualified contractors, those are all being currently reviewed by the architect and our construction manager. We'll be meeting with that, the project team, the village engineer, village council, myself, on Wednesday to review and kind of recap their review of those bids for compliance, both legal and substantive, after which we'll have a complete report to the board. We also continue to work and meet with and solicit additional information on proposals that we received on the adaptive reuse of Village Hall, so that process will be ongoing, and now we're really at a point where we can start comparing the options. Finally, the annual financial statement was completed and is now available, it's online. It also filled in some of the last missing pieces towards the budget, so I will be working on that and soliciting dates for another budget workshop, which would include both operating and capital, likely in the first week or two of April, so I'll look for that. And then, again, I will be more prepared for a more comprehensive one next meeting, assuming we get back on the regular schedule.
Thank you. Mr. Rother?
As a follow-up. In continuation of changing our water source and the operation and maintenance of our system, we are finishing up on a series of RFPs, two RFPs, and proposed forms of contract, so that we can go out and contract for operation and maintenance services for the system, as well as meter reading and billing. We're doing it in an optional fashion so that we can contract for all of those services with one company, or perhaps split it up and having meter reading and billing with a separate company so that we can get the best possible bid for both of those services. We hope to have on the agenda at the next meeting, resolution that's authorizing both of those RFPs. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Davis Ford, I know we haven't had a legal committee.
We, our meeting was canceled last month, and so we didn't have a meeting, so I don't have anything to update, except just wanted to let people know that on April the 9th, a Eat Healthy program with Barnabas Health will be held at St. Andrews Church for nominal fee. They're providing their chef, who will teach you how to eat healthy and make great food. And so more details will be coming at our March 23 meeting. And the only other thing that I wanted to talk about, because I think it belonged in our legal personnel and health committee, but the president stole my thunder, and I just wanted to wish Howard Levinson a happy birthday. And that ends my report.
Do you want to mention about the St. Barnabas proposal?
Uh, no, would you like to weigh in on that? I was going to save it to our next meeting.
Okay.
Trustee Levinson?
We didn't have a finance meeting this past week, we'll make it up at the next one.
Okay, Trustee Rosner?
I have to say happy birthday, Russell.
Everybody's report is happy birthday, Howard.
Planning and zoning committee's meeting tomorrow night, last month's meeting got canceled due to too many people being sick, I think, actually.
Good reading, cancel a meeting. Okay, at this time, I'd like to open the meeting back up for public comments.
Alex, can I make one quick announcement?
Oh, sure.
So at our last meeting, I really neglected, so we're celebrating our own, so, you know, Howard, happy birthday. But there actually, a couple weeks ago was the results of the first months of the South Orange Health and Wellness Challenge, and one of our very own, sitting at this table, oh, it was Sheena! Won one of the awards. There were four awards given, two for male, two for female, and Sheena was one of the biggest losers.
I lost over 10 pounds in one month.
Which is.
Came in second place to a good friend of mine, and then the next day I ate. I was hungry.
So you gamed the system.
Now, they're doing a great job, and all the contestants are, we're seeing gradual progress, 75% plus lost some form of weight, and those who aren't losing weight are exercising, and they're improving their lifestyle, so we still have 125 moving through these next few months, and it's getting pretty exciting.
And I suspect now that the sun is out and the snow is melting, we can start wearing our T-shirts, and people will recognize us out there, so it's a good thing.
And happy birthday, Howard Levinson.
Is there anything else? All right, I'd like to open the meeting up for public comments, if there's any member of the public who wishes to speak at this point. Okay, seeing as there's no members of the public who wish to speak, I'd like to close the public comment period. We did already cover our discussion items, so unless there's any new business.
Pause, pause, don't, I know you're going to move very quickly, we've got two people in the audience, Catherine Crenshaw and Bob Zuckerman, just want to share with the board that the first round of code review recommendations to the board via a first reading on an ordinance regarding awnings and signage, and also the design review board that we had discussed previously in creating the Great Streets Matching Grant Program will appear at the March 23 meeting.
Wow.
Great.
Awesome.
Thank you.
I move to adjourn.
All right, moved by Trustee Column.
Seconded.
Seconded by Trustee Schnall, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good night.[1781.16]